We will call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Poplar Bluff to be held on Monday, July 17, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Our invocation tonight will be from Reverend Ray Owens. Lisa will help us out now. Thank you, Lisa.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we bless you be able to sort it. We thank you for this time that we have together to discuss the city's needs and just be with each one of us and we will keep in mind that we are doing what is best for the city's future. And Lord, we just thank you for this wonderful season that we have to live. Just as you said in your name.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Parson?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Massingham?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Here.
Mayor Corman?
Here.
We have six persons.
Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none. Item six, citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. We have Linda Moore. Just go ahead and state your name for the record and your address.
My name is Linda Moore. I'm here on behalf of Jeremy Roth, Poplar Bluff Motorsports. He wasn't able to be here tonight because he had an emergency out of town. Previously, the City Council had approved him to have a fireworks display on July 1st. Then unfortunately, it was rained out and so was the race. He was wondering if the Council would approve for him to reschedule those fireworks for July 28th.
Yeah, this was the one y'all approved a few weeks ago out at the racetrack that unfortunately didn't happen. So Linda and I talked this morning and I just told her she could come and speak on his behalf. It's kind of the same deal as it was last time with the Fire Department will do their thing and make sure it's all safe.
I make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item seven, the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
Mr. Mayor, with that being said, I do believe that we all received in our packet all of the items listed. So with that being said, I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, workshop items for discussion. Item A, the City Council will consider a request to grant a license for a taxi cab business to Mr. Robert Neal of Patriot Transportation. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Mr. Robert Neal has applied for a taxi cab business license and per our ordinance is a certified letter was sent to the only existing cab company in Poplar Bluff, JJ's, notifying them of the application. We did receive a response back from the owner of JJ's cabs stating that they did not oppose the application. So this is, per ordinance, you have the authority to issue or deny an application for a taxi cab business license. I'm not sure if Mr. Neal is here tonight or not. He is, if y'all'd like him to come up and hear any questions for him.
Would you like to come up and talk a little bit about your business?
Yeah, just to start out, I ain't got a lot. I'm not a very good public speaker, but I start out, I've been a taxi cab driver in this town for about 13 years. I've worked for every company that has been in cities since back, well, J&amp;B days. I've been there with the good companies, I've been there with the bad companies. I see that there's a need in this town for a more reputable company that will service their customers and your citizens better. There's, the companies I've worked for in the past, there's been owners that want to make money, they won't care about their cars, they won't care about their employees, and most importantly, they don't care about their customers. They just want the money. Well, what I want to do, what I envision is, I personally went out and bought more expensive cars, more decent, up-to-date cars to, I don't want, as a driver, former driver, I've driven junk. I believe that the citizens in this town deserve a better experience. That's what I'll strive to do if you guys approve me today.
Do you have insurance?
I sure do. I got full coverage, commercial insurance as required by the city. I've showed City Hall that paperwork as they requested.
How many vehicles are you wanting to start off?
Well, for now, I have two. I have a, I believe I listed on the application, I had a 2012 Kia Soul and a 2007 Chevy Cobalt. Unfortunately, the Chevy Cobalt is no more. It's no more. So I replaced that with a 2016 Nissan Altima. So pretty decent cars.
Okay.
I think it's good because we do need a good cab company and if you'll do what you're saying, I'm okay with that.
I'd make a motion to move this to the voting session held August 7th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item B, the City Council will consider amending the City of Poplar Bluff Code of Ordinances. Article eight, sections 210.2100, definitions 210.210A and C, 210.2110A, B and H, 210.2120A and B, 210.2140A1, and 210.2160A and B relative to the age of minors. Mr. Winters?
This section of our ordinance deals with the purchasing of tobacco by minors. Our current ordinance is outdated and prohibits the sale of tobacco products to anyone under the age of 18. The federal minimum wage, the federal minimum age to purchase has been raised to 21 and this is simply increasing that minimum age from 18 to 21. As we've been looking at some different ordinances, this was kind of the first and simplest change that needed to be made, so we're bringing this one up to you.
Now, this will bring us in compliance with the state, right?
Yes, that is correct, yeah. Federal and state law are 21, so we're just updating ours to be in agreement with the federal and state laws.
I make a motion, we move it to the voting session held August 7th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the City Council will consider a request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a conditional use permit for the operation of an archery tag-flag business at C1, in a C1 neighborhood commercial district located at 2318 North Main Street. The applicant is Brady Nickel. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll get to hear me talk a lot through the first half of this agenda. Mr. Sisk is on vacation, so I told him I would take care of his items tonight. So this request is to allow an archery tag business to operate at 2318 North Main Street, which is also currently used for commercial paintball operation. The archery tag is being requested to be added to this current location. These are soft foam arrows that patrons shoot at one another. Actually, the night of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think that Mayor Corman and Lisa were here and they shot James with one of them, so they're just a soft foam dart they kind of played tag with. The applicant did, you know, is anxious to get up and running and did ask that we workshop and vote this in the same evening.
Shane and I were in the meeting and witnessed it. I know Brady personally, and so I recommend that we move this to the voting session to be held tonight.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the City Council will consider a request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a conditional use permit to operate a daycare facility for up to 25 children in a C2 general commercial district located at 2217 Fair Street. The applicant is Jeffrey Hampton. Manager, Winters?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a request to operate a, for a conditional use permit to operate a daycare at 2217 Fair Street. The building is a former church and has also served as a daycare center in the past. It's currently a vacant building. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of this request and I'm not sure if Mr. Hampton is here or not, if he is, if he wanted to come up and say anything.
He's not. But we were also in the meeting and he's a very nice man. He's a nurse.
Yes.
I think he's got a partner that is also a travel nurse.
And we desperately need daycare facilities in town, for sure.
You have a small grandchild, you understand that.
That's right.
Is this the same location that where one just moved out of a few months ago?
Been gone about a year.
Yeah, it's been gone probably a year or so, yeah, right there on Fair Street.
Make a motion to move this to the voting session held August 7th. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the City Council will consider a request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a conditional use permit to operate a plumbing business in a C1 neighborhood commercial district located at 2227 Maud Street. The applicant is James Bruce Peterson. Manager, Winters?
Yes, this building is also currently vacant. It was rezoned to C1 neighborhood commercial in 2009. The applicant is a city licensed master plumber and we use the building for office space and storage of material and equipment. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of this request. I believe the owner is here, if he guys would like to come up and add anything to what we've got, or if y'all have any questions.
Yeah, we're just, my name's James Bruce Peterson and we bought it and we're fixing it up. It was business before. The place is in a total wreck. The whole roof's off, we're doing a whole new roof. We have 2,000 square feet of it under roof as I speak, the back part of that garage. We've got it all done, new roof, everything, getting ready to put a new garage door on it, get an alarm system on that part. And then we're going to start on the other part, a little bit at a time. Well, we, you know, store equipment, we have several backhoe, I mean, new equipment, tractors, skisters, saw some of our equipment. Place is huge, it's about 11,000 square feet total. It's 1.6 acres and we bought the additional 1.6 in front of it. All the frontage on, from, you know, run around Roxy right there, all the frontage on that is ours. We got about three and a half acres now.
That's awesome. You know, it's good to see, I mean, it's both these items back-to-back, something going into.
It looks a lot better. We trimmed all the trees off.
I've seen that, it looks like.
Yeah, we got, need to be mowed again tomorrow, but I'm gonna have my guys mow it tomorrow, but it's getting there. Looks a lot better.
You had also said this was not going to be a retail.
Uh, no. It's all another business in itself, you know, too busy doing what I'm doing to do that.
I'm glad to see that building redone.
Yes.
It's been there for years and it used to be a really neat building, but.
Yeah, we're gonna redo the whole brick part, all like original, you know, re-tuckpoint it and whatever. It's gonna look pretty sharp when we get it all done.
I'd make a motion, we pass this to the August 7th voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item F, the City Council will consider a request from the Poplar Bluff Police Department to approve a police officer training employment agreement. Chief McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I believe Mr. Winters had provided the contract in its entirety to the council a couple of weeks ago. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have regarding said contract.
It is, you know, we have, I think, done better than a lot of departments in recruitment and retention, but it is becoming more and more of a challenge. This is a program that just about every other law enforcement agency around us and around the country is moving towards. You know, you've got, when they have graduation for the law enforcement academies, everybody's already got a job and most of them start off that way, so it's gonna help Chief and his staff continue to recruit new officers to our department.
I make a motion, move to the voting session to be held tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I will just kind of follow that up. The reason that is that I did ask for you to workshop and vote on this tonight is the academy starts August?
August the 7th.
August the 7th, and we have a couple really promising candidates that we're gonna send through it, so.
Yeah, so if I may, real quick, in order, the applicant process, vetting, background checks and et cetera, takes about eight to 12 weeks on average, and we've had a couple really good candidates that we've been hard charging on and they are ready, both are enrolled. That's the urgency behind this, as Mr. Winters said.
And you said two?
Yes, that is correct, two. I am happy to report, if I may, for the first time in about six years, we are fully staffed in all divisions, however, we have two upcoming retirements. Jamie Sample, after 28 years, is retiring, and then Jill Ward, after 30-plus years, is retiring a month after Jamie. So August and September, they're coming up quick.
All right, Chief, just hang tight. Item G?
I'll do it.
The City Council will request a, or consider a request from the Poplar Bluff Police Department to purchase equipment using money from the K-Porter Fund.
So Captain Darren Moore had submitted a request, Mr. Winters, for the purchase of two sets of items. The first round of items that Darren requested are the ANSI-rated, high-visibility vests that the officers wear when they're out on the roadway. It's, let's see, the last time we purchased those was 2010. We have purchased a few here and there over the years, but they're pretty bad shape. The total cost for those vests, for a total of 60, so we have some in reserves and can hand out to new officers, et cetera, is $3,480. And the second item we are requesting are to replace the department's inventory of flashlights for all officers. The last time we replaced flashlights was 2015, so those are about eight years old and struggling to find parts, et cetera. They are on state contract. The request submitted was $7,278 for those, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
The flashlights are gonna cost more than the vest?
Yes, yeah.
The vests are just, they're not like?
Oh, no, 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 not ballistic vests.
Okay, okay, okay.
No, no, ma'am.
And how many flashlights is that purchasing?
That's 50.
50?
Mm-hmm. And again, that gives us a few in reserve.
Sure. Make a motion to move this to the voting session August 7th. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item H, the City Council will consider accepting a grant award from the Department of Homeland Security Assistance to Firefighters Grant for the Poplar Bluff Fire Department. Fire Chief Mike Moffitt.
Good evening. Yeah, we've been awarded a $25,000 grant through the AFG. We're gonna purchase three new washer extractors. They will have one at each station and that allows us to decontaminate our fire gear after a fire scene. Right now, we currently have one washer extractor, it's kept at Station 1, and it's about 12 years old, so they're all in need of replacing.
Make, looks like we want to move this through this evening.
It does need to be voted on tonight because we have to accept it by the 23rd.
Yeah, we have to go on and accept it, and I think that's the 23rd, I think is, yeah, I think that's right. So yeah, for our next council meeting, we would have to go online and accept it.
Okay, so a motion to move this to the voting session held tonight. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, the City Council will consider a request from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding a qualifying facilities interconnection application agreement. Mr. Bach?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, 1978, Congress passed the Public Utility Regulatory Policies Act, or PERPA, to encourage electric energy conservation, increase utility efficiency, increase fairness in retail rates for electric consumers, expand the use of hydroelectric production, and conserve the use of natural gas and electric power generation. PERPA was designed to accomplish this by creating a new class of electric generating facilities called qualifying facilities, RQFs. The Act gave QFs special rates and regulatory treatment for power production from nonutility sources, cogeneration facilities, small dams, and other resources that meet the specified parameters. During the last four decades, there have been substantial changes in the electric industry, including a rapid shift away from the most vertically-integrated utilities, the development of wholesale energy and capacity markets for most of the country, and the adoption of renewable portfolio standards are goals in many states. Whoops. I skipped a sentence here. There have been substantial change in the electric industry, including a rapid shift away from the most vertically-integrated utilities, the development of wholesale energy and capacity markets for most of the country. The adoption of renewable portfolio standards are goals in many states and FERC policies mandating transmission access to nonutility providers. Prices for new renewable sources have also fallen over the last decade and several developers have attempted to leverage QF status for new projects, particularly solar developers. So to fulfill any qualifying facilities requests, the city will need to include the QF facilities interconnection agreement in our policy manual. So we discussed this at the advisory board meeting today and would recommend the adoption of this. Any questions?
So this kind of all came about because of a local factory that is looking to go with a pretty large solar array, and so it kind of spurred us on and Bill and his staff on, I think, is that the document there in the binder? That, yeah, it's not light reading.
That's good reading. You wanna go to sleep. But it's good, actually, it fulfills the requirement of FERC, so.
Make a motion to move it to the voting session to be held August 7th.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, the City Council will consider bids received for the purchase of trucks for the Poplar Bluff Street Department and a request to use money from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund for the purchase. Superintendent Jerry Lawson.
Mine will not be as elegant as Mr. Bach's presentation.
Just don't start with "back in 1978."
Not even close. I think I was up here maybe a month ago, we was talking about bids for dump trucks, and that failed miserably short. We got one out of it, which was awesome. We still had some of this money kind of allotted in a truck transportation-type line item, so to speak, and after speaking to Matt, and I think I said something to Mark, and Mr. Richardson looked into this, we went to local dealerships, got prices from the three dealers, and come back with four trucks that look like will be in the mid-50s, and due to the supply, demand and supply chain, we think this is probably our best move to go forward and try to purchase these. And once again, part of the reason for the voting on the same night, three of these four trucks are actually on the lot as we speak, and if, we afraid if we drag our feet any at all, they'll be gone and it may be months before we get another opportunity to get them. Anybody, any questions?
Yes, sir. What are these, 1,500, 2,500?
They're all three-quarter ton. Two of them are actually crew cab trucks and the other two, well, they're crew cab four-wheel-drive trucks. The other two, one is a double cab, still four doors, it's just not as big, and the other is a regular crew cab, three-quarter-ton truck. And I think I mentioned last time when we was kind of going through, kind of phasing out some of our older vehicles, a couple in the 90s, I think one's an 89. Our trucks that we're currently using today that these trucks have replaced would move to be in secondary trucks, which we'd still use probably every day, but they're already fitted for snow plows and set up for spreader beds, and this would save wear and tear on a new truck from not having to push snow and put stress on the chassis and transmission and what have you. So it would kind of be something we could prolong the longevity of the new truck a little more by not having to abuse it, or subject it to the abuse of plowing snow and what have you.
So they're set up for that, I mean, they're able to do that if?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we would have to move, take brackets off the wall and move it.
Twenty years, we need to use them for stuff.
Yes, if, keep our fingers crossed, it's 20 years. But, yeah, but that's, that's pretty much where we're at on these.
This was the lowest quote, was from Baldwin GMC.
Yes. That is correct.
I make a motion, move it to the voting session to be held tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, action-required items. AA Bill Number 8484, the City Council will take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for the operation of an archery tag field business located at 2318 North Main Street.
Move for a first reading of Bill Number 8484.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Brady Nickel to operate an outdoor archery tag business at 2318 North Main Street in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8484.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Brady Nickel to operate an outdoor archery tag business at 2318 North Main Street in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for adoption of Bill Number 8484.
Second. Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Corman?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Bill 8484 has been adopted. Item BB, Bill Number 8485, the City Council will take action on an ordinance approving a police officer training employment agreement.
First reading of Bill Number 8485.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance creating a police officer training program for the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri Police Department.
Make a motion for a second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance creating a police officer training program for the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri Police Department.
Motion for adoption of Bill Number 8485.
Second.
Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Corman?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Bill 8485 has been adopted. CC, Bill Number 8486, the City Council will take action on an ordinance accepting a grant award from the Department of Homeland Security Assistance to Firefighters Grant for the Poplar Bluff Fire Department. Make a motion for a first reading of Bill Number 8486.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the United States Department of Homeland Security Firefighters Assistance Program for a grant relative to equipment for the Poplar Bluff Fire Department.
Make a motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the United States Department of Homeland Security Firefighters Assistance Program for a grant relative to equipment for the Poplar Bluff Fire Department.
Motion for adoption of Bill Number 8486.
Second.
Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Corman?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Bill Number 8486 has been adopted. Bill number 8486 has been adopted. Item DD, bill number 8487, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for the purchase of trucks for the Poplar Bluff Street Department and approving the use of money from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund for the purchase.
Motion for reading of bill 8487. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance amending the 2023 fiscal year budget for the City of Poplar Bluff and accepting the lowest and best bid for service trucks for the Poplar Bluff Street Department.
Motion for second reading of bill 8487.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Clerk Phelps? Is that the second reading?
Second reading.
Okay.
Make a motion for adoption.
No, I think we're on second reading.
Oh, okay, sorry.
All in favor? Counselor?
An ordinance amending the 2023 fiscal year budget for the City of Poplar Bluff and accepting the lowest and best bid for service trucks for the Poplar Bluff Street Department.
Motion for adoption of bill number 8487.
Second.
Clerk Phelps?
Councilwoman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Corman?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Bill number 8487 has been adopted. Item EE, the city council of City of Poplar Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the open meetings law, Section 610.021, 0212, 0213, 0219.11, .12, .13, .20, or .14 RSMO.